...in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
True choice. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To begin this evening, we have a couple of presentations. And the first presentation is to recognize a donation from Plantronics for the Ozzy Dog Park. Is there a representative from Plantronics here? This is Jennifer.
Yes.
Thank you. Come on up here, Jennifer. Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here.
Sure.
And we want to thank Plantronics for giving a $2,000 donation to help us build the Ozzy Dog Park at the McGregor Park. You know, it's really partnerships and generous contributions like this from our business partners that make it possible for us to do the things that we do. And we certainly recognize Plantronics as a leader in our community, both leaders in the technical field that they're in and the fine products that they build, but as well as being solid members of the community, giving back to community and helping us achieve projects such as the Dog Park. And just quickly, I know we've talked about this before, but Ozzy Dog Park was named after the dog Ozzy who was found when Joshua Levin was hit on the...
Highway one.
On Highway one, yes. Thanks for reminding me. But, and you know, an Ozzy stayed by Joshua's side, and I think it was a fitting tribute for us to be able to name our Dog Park after Ozzy. And thanks so much to Plantronics for being partners with us in that project and in that recognition. So, anything you'd like to say, Jennifer?
Sure. Well, so Plantronics is very happy to make the donation, but I also wanted to take advantage to promote a little, another event that we have this weekend on Saturday. If you'd like to bring your dog down to Aptos Feed or Hidden Garden Nursery in the back there, you can have your pooch's photo taken with Santa. So, there's a, for a $5 donation, and we have all the props. We have the antlers, we have hats, we've got the whole thing, so. So, bring your dog for $5, you can get a photo taken with Santa, and then you also get a gift certificate at Aptos Feed for $5. So, come on down if you have an opportunity.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, I have a particularly special honor of presenting a proclamation and a recognition for Sergeant Matt Eller, who after 24 years on the Capitola Police Force is retiring. And so, if we could have Sergeant Eller come up. And I just want to say, it's a particularly special honor for me, Sergeant Eller, to be presenting you with this proclamation and as my actual last official act as the Mayor of Capitola. And so, I am particularly privileged to be able to do this. But if I may, read a little bit about your background in history. And I want to begin with that Sergeant Eller began his career in the United States Army in 1987, and later as an Army reservist until 1992. He attended basic training at Fort Leonard Wood in Missouri, and where he graduated first in his class. He later attended advanced infantry training and graduated third in his class from Fort Rucker in Alabama. He was a helicopter crew member for the 343rd Medical Detachment Detail, and he flew several emergency medical evacuation operations in Operation Desert Storm. Sergeant Eller came to us in the city of Capitola in January 1990, and as a reserve police officer, he later became a full-time police officer in January of 1992. In December of 2001, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant, and in 2012, he graduated from the Peace Officer Standards and Training Sherman Block Leadership Academy Class 313. He has been instrumental in obtaining several grants for the city for efforts to reduce vehicle collisions, and he's been particularly recognized by the Office of Traffic Safety and the Mothers Against Drunk Driving for his efforts in reducing drunk driving occurrences and collisions here in our community. So with that, I, therefore Sam Story, Mayor of the city of Capitola, on behalf of the entire city council hereby recognize Sergeant Eller for his dedicated service to the employees, citizens of the city of Capitola, and the United States of America. It appears that there were no additional materials here tonight, except for these I believe the chief also has a proclamation. candy kisses, so whichever one is welcome to share. Next, we'll go to additions and deletions to the agenda.
Well, congratulations, Matt.
Do we have any?
Staff has no changes to the agenda.
No changes to the agenda.
And in a couple of weeks, you'll be officially retired, and the contributions that you've
Next will be public comments. These are opportunities for members of the public to address the council on matters not
made to this community and this profession, we are extremely grateful.
on tonight's agenda.
With the help of our supervisor, Zach Friend, we were able to get a special congressional
See anyone like to speak? Please step up.
Marilyn Garrett, retired elementary school teacher and part of wireless radiation
recognition from our Congressman Sam Farr, and I'll read the last two paragraphs. Sergeant Eller has not only committed his career to protecting and serving the United States of America and the Central Coast, but he is also a loving husband and father to his wife, Arlene, and their three children.
alert network, and what I want to do tonight is to try to alert people in this community
Therefore, I, Sam Farr, Congressman of the California 20th Congressional District, recognize
to plans that are going through the city's planning department to put a Verizon radiation
Sergeant Matt Eller for his commitment to public service and safety and his invaluable contributions to the Central Coast and the United States of America.
emitting cancer-causing cell tower right here in the parking lot.
Thank you.
I just saw again Take Back Your Power, a documentary on the smart meters and wireless microwave radiation dangers. I know Stephanie Harland, who's a nurse, acknowledged that she saw this twice, and Dennis Norton, I want to lend this to you, and I want to speak to you after you see it. It's must-viewing, I think, for everybody, so you know the implications of what you seem to be planning. Surveys around cell towers in eight countries all show ill health effects. They show people complaining of sleep disturbances, cardiovascular problems, memory loss, fatigue, headaches, increased cancer incidence. This is a given. This is consistent. So, when you sign on to something like that, you are not only giving over what belongs to the public, but you are condemning people in the community to known damage. I think this is unconscionable, and it needs to be stopped in its tracks. In addition, I've looked at some of the contracts that, with the county and various cities, with these telecommunications corporations. They are written, many of them with a five-year lease, with the option to extend the lease on the part of the telecommunications corporation, not the city, not the person maybe whose property it's on. So, it means property rights are also lost. Verizon, these corporations are pretty deadly. I want to recommend everybody see TakeBackYourPower.net, and the health impacts are known. And you know what? It's not a tourist attraction, having people come and get microwaved or to see this. Here's some photos of some of the cell towers that are in the county. This is definitely not a tourist attraction. Capitola is known to be a quaint town with a unique history and lots of wildlife. Birds and bees are also killed by this radiation. I have pictures of dead birds, hundreds of them around cell towers. So, wireless also harms humans, and I think this is what everybody should be doing. Boycott Verizon. I personally have no cellphone, no Wi-Fi, none of this. I have a landline that works fine and doesn't radiate me. So, I think this needs to be nipped in the bud. Thank you. No cell tower in Capitola's parking lot.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. See anyone else like to address the council?
City council members, I'm sure you have a full agenda. I'd just like to introduce myself. My name is Patrick Rooney. I spent 26 years with the county assessor's office, and I have made an application to be part of the, if approved, I would be delighted to serve on the Planning Commission. I currently work for Becker, Re &amp; Weber, a local company here in Capitola, and I also live in Capitola. So, if you could kindly just, I'd like to just introduce myself, and so you could put a face with an application. So, thank you for your kindness in just reviewing that application. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick, for coming out. Anyone else like to address the council this evening? Seeing none, I'm going to close the microphone, and we'll move on to city council, city treasurer, staff comments. We'll begin with staff comments.
I believe our police chief has a little update for us on this current storm.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Just to kind of give you an update of the storm, in preparation for today's events, we gave out over 1,500 sandbags and 10 yards of sand. We started the week by communicating with our various businesses and our residential community members through our social media outlets. We had some local flooding down in the village and around town. We got a lot of help from Central Fire. Our Public Works crews were just phenomenal. They were everywhere all day today. We did close the wharf. This morning, we made sure that the gas and the water were turned off in anticipation for high waves and up to 50 mile an hour winds. That will be open tomorrow. We've been in communication with the owners of the property and the managers of the restaurant, so we're going to make those arrangements, so they'll be open tomorrow. The creek right now is currently five feet lower than what it was this morning. What happened was due to the surf with the wind, it was pushing the sand up, and it was acting as like a sand dam. Once that was able to clear, and the creek was actually starting to rise, it busted open, and we were able to get the water through. So, it's actually five feet lower than it was this morning, so that's a good thing. We also had some flooding down around the Monterey Park area. That was primarily due, there was just so much water, we got an extra pump down there. I had nothing to do with it. Public Works was all over it. They were, like I said, they were all over the town trying to take care of things, and with the help of Central Fire, they're clearing a lot of the storm drains as well. So, that's kind of our update for now, and we're going to continue to monitor it through the evening. Any questions?
No. Thank you for that report, Chief. Any other staff comments? Seeing none, council members. Yes, Dennis.
Well, kudos to Public Works Department today for taking care of our town.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, Mike.
I spoke in error at the last meeting. You know, I made a small gaffe when I mentioned a couple of neighbors who spoke to me from Monterey. One of them, I named two of them, and I'm afraid I, just as a matter of course, because she's been on the Board of Trustees of SoCal School for so long, I just think of her as Sandra Wallace School Board. It was not the school board making the comments regarding the skate park, it was merely Sandra Wallace as a neighbor. So, enough said.
Thank you for that, Claire Keshamite. Any other council comments this evening? Seeing none, let's move on to now our consent calendar. These items will be handled with one vote unless any item is polled. Does any member of the public wish to poll a consent agenda item? Seeing none, any member of the council wish to poll a consent agenda item?
Who's the consent agenda?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Which brings us to the main event for this evening, which is our public hearings, general government agenda items. The first item is Item 8A, which is the consideration of resolution confirming and approving the canvass of returns and results of the general municipal election held in Capitola on the fourth day of November 2014. The recommended action is to approve, adopt the resolution, and can we begin with a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is for adoption of a resolution confirming and approving the canvass of returns and results of the general municipal election held on November 4th, 2014. And this was consolidated with the statewide general election, and the purpose was to elect three members of the city council for full terms of four years and to vote on the measure. And as you all know, the measure, which was regarding amending the municipal code, raising the transient occupancy tax from 10% to 11%, that did fail. And in your staff report, it lists the candidates that won this election. Stephanie Harland won by 23.44%, Michael Termini by 21%, and Jacques Bertrand by 17.21%. And as far as Measure A, the yes votes were 46.16%, and the no votes were 53.84%. The turnout of this election was rather low. It was 55.15%. So, that's basically my staff report. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Sue. Other questions on the staff report? Any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for council action to adopt the resolution.
Move to adopt the resolution?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Which unfortunately brings us to Item B, which is a presentation of proclamations from the county of Santa Cruz. I feel kind of weird reading this, but from county of Santa Cruz Supervisor Zach Friend and State Assembly Member Mark Stone to outgoing Mayor Story. And so, maybe we'll just begin with Supervisor Friend. Thank you, Zach, for being here this evening.
Why don't, Sam, why don't you stand up in front here, and all three, you could stand there together and be on TV.
That's a great suggestion.
You're used to that, aren't you, Zach?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Boring for the microphone.
Well, good evening, Mayor Story and City Council. I'm Zach Friend. I have the true honor of representing a good portion of this beautiful city and the privilege of being here tonight to recognize you. Regardless of what your city manager says, I'd like to point out that every once in a while, the county does provide things to the city of Capitola. So, let that be reflected in the minutes, please. Thank you. So, I consider, Mayor, I consider Sam not just a representative of this community, but also a friend, and I think it's important for the community to know that his public service by far does not start and end with your eight years on the city council. I mean, your contributions are remarkable to the voiceless community bridges, but also, as I was driving here, and I was thinking about all the businesses that are sandbagged and blocked off right now. You were a tireless advocate for the businesses that were damaged in the storm of a few years ago, both with, not just to the county, but also just to the emotional side of the community itself. I mean, you address not just the financial needs, but also the emotional needs. You've really been a steadfast leader of people and their concerns and their needs first, and it's something that will be truly missed as a representative of this area. But lucky for us, you're not really going anywhere. And good for you, because you've been doing this for everybody else. I actually get to proclaim today Sam Story Day in the county of Santa Cruz.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
And to be honest, Sam, it doesn't, it actually doesn't mean anything. But, but if you would have quickly gotten down to the county today, maybe you would have been like 18th at the planning department, maybe they would have helped you out. I don't know. But, but all the same, it means a lot for me to be able to give this to you, since this is, you give so much to the community, and we hope that this, tonight, you being termed out, is not the end of your contribution to this city, because this city really needs your voice in it. So, thank you for all you've done for Capitola.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you, Zach, so much for coming out this evening and presenting me with this award, and I think it's awesome that it's Sam Story Day. And I just want to thank everything that you've done, everything that, how, you know, I think you've helped me and to learn in this position and grow in this position. And I have to say that I don't think I'd be here if it wasn't part of some of our collaboration and efforts. And I don't know if you remember back when this, I first even thought about running, you were there, and you were the one that really, I think, put a spark in me, and that has carried with me over these whole, over these eight years. I have more to say later, so I won't belabor it now, but other than just, I'm really honored, and I really appreciate your coming out and presenting me with this proclamation. Thank you.
We have a beautiful, beautiful resolution from Assembly Member Mark Stone. So, I'm going to have, I'm going to, Sam, hold it a little bit while I read part of it. Beautiful, beautiful resolution. "To the honorable Sam Story, whereas the relationship between a city and its residents is a vital and interdependent one, deriving its strength from the quantity and quality of civic involvement and public spirit generated by an individual such as the honorable Sam Story, who is completing his term as mayor and a member of the Capitola City Council following eight years of dedicated and responsible service. And it's appropriate at this time to extend special recognition and commendation for him to his many fine public achievements. Since his election to the Capitola City Council in November 2006 and subsequent reelection, Sam has worked diligently to address the concerns and needs of residents of the area and to improve the quality of life for future generations. And during his tenure in office, he distinguished himself as a capable and effective leader by virtue of his performance as mayor in 2008 and 2014. As a member of the city council, Sam played a vital role in improving relationships between the city and the SoCal Union School District, and facilitating the ownership agreements for the new Brighton Middle School Gymnasium and Jade Street Community Center. His exceptional leadership, knowledge, and legal expertise were instrumental in addressing the city's rent control issues, advancing the Rispin Mansion Park project, and securing a location for the long-awaited Capitola Skate Park. In, resolved by the Assembly Member Mark Stone, that the honorable Sam Story be commended on his exemplary record of leadership as mayor and a member of the Capitola City Council, and extended sincere best wishes for continued success in his future endeavors. Dated this 11th day of December 2014, the Honorable Mark Stone, Assembly Member."
It's going to be tough shoes to fulfill in this town. Sam, I admire not only your interest in family, and by the way, Helen and Ruby, would you please come up here for a second? Please. Capitola is a family town, and this shows right here. Hi, Ruby. For the last eight years in the council, six of those, Sam, has served also as the Executive Director of Community Bridges. And if anyone is acquainted with Community Bridges and the scale of that project we do, it's actually a larger organization in the city of Capitola. And so, not only was he Executive Director and carrying that organization, he also served as our council member in our town. A huge load. And this is not an easy position to be in and carrying that much, especially with family. And I thank Helen, I thank Ruby, and I'm sure Sam does, of their dedication through this time, and probably stepping off both of these, maybe some time with Ruby and more family time. But this council really has been proud of your performance as a, in a community, as a council member, and particularly for me, the last year, in watching Sam in action as the mayor of the city. He's polite, he's conscientious, and he ran a very structured meeting, but at the same time, he was cordial to everyone around him. And that's the position of mayor, and I thank you for being that way, Sam. And so, I have, Ruby, if you could hold this.
Do you have anything to say?
No.
And this is a Karen Nevis tile of the Village of Capitola, and it's for you, Sam Story, Capitola City Councilman, 2006 to 2014, and thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you, Dennis.
You want to say something here, Sam? You don't get to sit down again.
I don't get to, at all?
No. Oh, I think he does.
Wait a minute.
Oh, I think he does.
Doesn't he get to sit down one more time?
Yeah. What else do you have to do?
Well, it says on the agenda that I get to make some remarks.
You do.
I intend to...
I think you should sit down, Sam.
Okay. See, I'm not going to give this up easily. Well, I did want to take a few minutes to say some thank yous to a lot of people that I have worked with and that have helped me, I think, through this journey over the last eight years. And to begin with, I do want to thank Helen, my wife. I want to thank Ruby for sitting through a lot of meetings with me when I know she was bored to tears and would have rather been someplace else. I want to thank all the wonderful staff of this city, and Jamie, John, Chief, Steve, Rich, Sue. You know, I really have come to admire and appreciate your professionalism, the quality and the excellence of your service, and your ability to manage the complexities of local government. And let me tell everybody that there truly are a tremendous amount of complexities in the work that they do, and they're so professional at it, sometimes you don't see it and aren't aware of it. But at the same time, as they navigate through those complexities, they also bring forth a great deal...
See, I'm not gonna give this up easily. Well, I did want to take a few minutes to say some thank yous to a lot of people that I have worked with and that have helped me, I think, through this journey over the last eight years. And to begin with, I do want to thank Helen, my wife. I want to thank Ruby for sitting through a lot of meetings with me when I know she was bored to tears and would have rather been someplace else. I want to thank all the wonderful staff of this city, and Jamie, John, Chief, Steve, Rich, Sue. You know, I really have come to admire and appreciate your professionalism, the quality and the excellence of your service, and your ability to manage the complexities of local government. And let me tell everybody that there truly are a tremendous amount of complexities in the work that they do, and they're so professional at it, sometimes you don't see it and aren't aware of it. But at the same time, as they navigate through those complexities, they also bring forth a great deal of customer service to the community, and I think that's a tremendous tribute to you. I always felt like it's the staff that has made the council look good, so I do want to thank you, and that goes to all the staff. I know I just named some of the department heads, but we have a wonderful staff here, and I want to thank all of you. It's been my privilege to be able to work with you over these last eight years. I also want to give thanks to, obviously, all the, my colleagues up here on the city council. It's been just a tremendous opportunity to work with all of you, and I also want to acknowledge other council members over the last eight years that are not here. Ron Graves, which is, who is in the audience, and Kirby Nickel, which I served with for four years, and Bob Begun, the late Bob Begun, who has now passed on. I just come to admire and appreciate all of them and all of you, and I have learned so much. I know that, you know, we all had differences of opinion, that's why there are five of us, that's why the community wants us to all be here, to look at things and look at tough issues from different perspectives. But even though we had different opinions, I was always knew and aware that we all had the same motivations, which was doing the absolutely best that we thought for the community and for the city. So, I was just a small part of the accomplishments and challenges that we faced over the past eight years, and I think more is homage to all of the former council members. I did want to speak a little bit about what I viewed as some of the major accomplishments and how, and some of the major work and issues that we struggled with. And beginning with, and one particularly gut-wrenching issue for me was the, one of mobile home rent control and the tremendous litigation that we faced over that issue. And, but we were able to work through that, and I felt that, you know, we resolved that in the best interest of the community as a whole, but at the same time, we did it in a way to try to protect the low-income residents of the mobile home parks. And when I first came on the council, the Rispin Hotel Project was, still been feverishly discussed, and it kind of slowly died a slow death over the years, and, but I am proud that I was part of a council that finally came to some final decisions about what we would do with the Rispin Mansion, and that the final decision was that it would be open a park, public grounds, and is on the path to being constructed or built as a park. And as well, you know, we did the same with the McGregor Property. That sat languished for years and years as I, when I was on the council, and we had many discussions about possibly putting a hotel there, but we finally came to some resolutions, and we had a proclamation tonight concerning the Aussie Dog Park. I'm really proud to say that we were, are able to provide a dog park, a skate park finally, for the kids in the community, and a bike pump track at the McGregor Property. You know, during my tenure, the council and the staff, we went through the worst recession since the Great Depression. Those were some tough economic times, but we weathered those storms and got through them to a much brighter day, and I was really grateful to be able to be here when things improved tremendously. You know, we survived a major flood in 2011. I'm really glad it didn't flood again today. Now, I mean, after today, if it floods, then that's, you guys have to deal with that. And following that, you know, we had significant litigation against the insurance company, which we really drove to a successful conclusion. We also dealt with another tougher, tough issue, and that's concerning the use of the Pat Cove Mobile Home Park, and we're able to now have that as a temporary parking lot with plans to ultimately make that, again, open space and a public park for the community. We completed our general plan after many years of effort, and finally, we have forged a better working relationship with the SoCal Unified School District, and hopefully, we can continue that in order to do joint projects for the benefit of the community. But now, it's time for a new council, a new makeup, and some of the old guard to maybe build on these accomplishments, these successes, and these challenges. I also want to give a nod to all those who ran in the last election, and because, you know, it's public engagement and participation, it's the lifeblood of a community, and it's the engine that drives local government, so I would encourage everyone to get involved with the Capitola governance here. I also want to congratulate Mike for winning reelection, Stephanie for winning reelection. I think I consider the two of you kind of Mr. and Mrs. Capitola, so congratulations. And I also want to congratulate Jacques for being the winner, and Jacques, I just, you have big shoes to fill when you get up here, which will just be in a few minutes, and so... And my final thank yous go out to really all the voters and my supporters over the last eight years who helped me get here, and who I've had the privilege and honor of serving and working with. And I do want, one thing I was reflecting and I was noting, I think over these past eight years, I've said the Pledge of Allegiance like 288 times. And, you know, it never got old for me. I always felt like I was saying it for the first time, and, you know, and those words always had great meaning for me. It's kind of like the last time we speak in one voice, and then we all get down to business, but we do so in a cordial, civil way, and all working with the same interest at heart. So, I guess I'll close by, you know, people, as this day has been coming up, people have been asking me, aren't you glad to be leaving the council and having all that free time? And, you know, when I really think about it, I have to say, no, I'm not. It is, this has been a labor of love for me. I have really appreciated the honor of serving, and I'm not relishing leaving, but that is the democratic process here. And so, thank you, everyone. With that, I'll just say my watch is done, and Dennis, I will now leave my seat.
Is there any council comments to Sam while he's walking away?
Absolutely.
Okay. Mike?
I'm not gonna just walk away.
You wanna go first?
Yes, go ahead. Of course.
Sam, you know, you have all watched Sam perform as a council member and as mayor for eight years, with such grace, with such poise, and measured responses, thoughtful consideration. What you haven't seen is the Sam Story in closed session for the really difficult, troubling matters. And when I tell you that he's a leader in all senses of the word, and we have always looked to him for his careful consideration and his grace, and I am feeling a sense of loss tonight. I have also watched Ruby patiently sit at meetings that I've attended with you, and it has always touched me, and I think I've mentioned it to you once or twice, that she always comes, sits, reads, draws, and occasionally looks up at her dad. No look of impatience, no fidgeting, no, you know, grousing at having to be there. And finally, if you think you've gotten away completely scot-free, you haven't. Matter of fact, your name happened to be bandied about at the Capitola Safety Foundation meeting on Tuesday night, so I'm pretty sure you'll be one of our new board members, and I think I have a few other things here, but I don't want to scare you away yet, so I'll creep up on you, but thank you. You have taught me, you have been a friend, you have been such a soldier for this community. You are a great man. Thank you.
Just a couple of quick things. I came to Capitola in 2009, and I remember back, I come in my first city council meeting, and Sam Storey was the mayor in 2010, and here it is full circle, four years later, and again, I'm looking over you at the mayor, and so much has happened. I sat in the audience and watched the meetings with intrigue and just trying to be part of what happens here, and I remember reflecting back, especially, probably the most difficult time was the broken pipe and the flood, and what you all went through, all four of you, and especially, Sam, I remember your demeanor at the dais here and how you dealt with people, and the one lesson, when you're up here, especially in my position, you're trying to learn from people, and there's people that have been here for, I don't want to insult anybody for how many total years I've up here of service, but we all know it's a lot. And Sam, one of the things you always said, you know, you were the best processor, you always processed all the information. There was no spontaneous decision that ever came from you. It was always, you know, you discussed it, labored over it, and made a decision, but in your context, you would always use these words, and it was, what drove you was, I want to do what's best for the citizens of Capitola. And it was never about what you wanted, or what you liked, or what you thought was, it was what you felt benefited this community, and that was a big part to lose, you know, just now, that just walked away from you, because the community was definitely represented by your presence. And Mike touched on the closed sessions. It was an inspiration, that's all I can say, because we're not supposed to talk about that, but you will be missed, and like I said, I don't think you're going away, and thank you for everything you shared up here with me especially, Sam. Good to miss you.
I just want to say thank you also, Sam, and thank you to your family for being so supportive. This is something that, as a family person, you can't do without the support of your family or friends or close ones, and it's been really wonderful to watch. And so, thank you for everything you've done for the community. I know you'll be there for a long time, and we'll still be working together on a lot of things. Thank you very much.
Sam, I just learned tonight that you grew up in Georgia, but I've never heard you say "you all" one time. Would you please do that for us before you leave?
I've heard him say it.
Never hear that.
Thank you very much, Sam Storey. Sue, we now move to the oath of office for newly elected and re-elected council members.
Okay, we're gonna do this all together, so after I state "I," just say your name, and then repeat after me. And why don't we put the "I" there between three?
Oh, him holding a "I"?
Raise your right hand, please. "I."
"I," Michael Termini.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
...against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
...foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
...that I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
...and allegiance...
And allegiance...
...to the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
...that I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
...without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
...or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
...and that I will well and faithfully...
That I will well and faithfully...
...discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
...upon which I am about to enter...
Upon which I am about to enter. Thank you. Jacques, please sit in the mayor's seat for a few...
He's actually not kidding.
That's the only vacant one.
Process.
The only empty seat.
He's lofty about it.
Kind of enjoy it for a while. Just for a while.
So, Jacques, would you like to start with your comments as a new council member?
Okay. Job is full of surprises. Job is full of surprises. Okay. It'll take a while to find my voice. One of the people that supported me early on said, "Be careful with your words." So, I will. But I would like to recognize the people that helped me get here. Actually, Stephanie may not remember, but she appointed me to the village committee, long-gone committee, and Sam, I think you're still there, appointed me to the finance committee, and those committees really got me aware of what this city is about. So, I highly suggest that is a route for people to get involved in this community, to join the activities through committees, through art and wine, all the different things. This is the only way that I think people could find out what Capitola's like. You get involved, and that's the best way. The other thing, I like to, you know, reach out to my wife up in Colorado Hills, skiing her butt off, excuse the word, I guess, with her sisters and my daughter. They just went with me. It's unbelievable how hard it is to run a campaign. You're up and down almost every day. It's truly amazing. So, also, I'd like to reach out to the people who voted for me. Everyone that I knocked, every door that I knocked on, and every engagement I had with each person, the things I said, I meant. I totally believe in civil engagement. I totally believe in the purpose of government, and I totally believe in our role as citizens in making this government work. I'm committed to that, and that's it.
I'd like to thank everybody who helped me, and look forward to four wonderful years on the council again, with great staff and great council members and a great community. We have such fabulous people in this community, and many of you are here tonight, and you give so much of yourselves that, you know, we're just part of it. And happy to be serving in this great community again, and looking forward to continued good fortunes economically and environmentally. We have a lot of work to do, and it's gonna be, I think, a very productive year, and I'm looking forward to working with Jacques.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the 1200 or 1400 people who voted for me, most of whom I don't know personally. It's a, it's a very strange feeling, you know, people who don't know you personally, putting you up to this kind of an office. This is a very seductive position, and, which is why term limits are good, because, and it's seductive not in the power you have, not in any wealth or riches that you obtain, it's seductive in a mode that I can only akin to raising children, that you develop a level of care to the point when, even if your children are 30 or 40 years old, you're still attached to them, to the last breath. And I'll give you a little insight. You sit up here, and you hear people speaking and issues being discussed, and one of the things that rolls around in my head is, why are you doing this? Not, why the hell are you doing this, but just musing, why are you here? Why are you sitting and listening to this? What are you doing? Why are you doing it? And it is born from love. It's love of the community. It's love of the people who live in the community. It is love for all parts of it, what it is, where it is. And tonight, I'm elevated to an even greater position of being Mr. Capitola with Stephanie. What could be better?
Thank you, Michael. We now move to the reorganization of the city council, and this is appointment of the mayor and the vice mayor for the city. Is there a nomination for mayor?
I'd like to nominate Dennis Norton.
A second there.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor?
"Aye."
Motion carries. We now move to vice mayor position.
I would like to nominate Ed Botorff.
Second.
There's a motion to second. All those in favor?
"Aye."
Motion carries. Ed, you are now the new vice mayor of Capitola.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Would you like to make a statement or -- okay.
I'm good.
Okay. I would like to make a small statement here. Okay. First of all, I'm proud and honored to serve as the mayor of Capitola. This is the first, not the first time I've done this, but it'll be the best time I've done it. The thing I want to know is, why is it every time I come mayor that we have a disaster?
We just, we planned for that.
You planned that. Floods, water, me, I'm a water boy, so maybe water comes along with me. We have a number of important infrastructure projects to complete this year, and starting with the Stock and Espinon intersection crossing. And we're in process of doing that, and hopefully, we're going to be doing that by the end of winter. The Park Avenue sidewalks is a longtime project that will be, is in process right now. We'll have that done in this next year. McGregor Skate and Dog and Bike Park is in motion, and hopefully, all three of those will be built by February or March. And I know there's a lot of people in this community waiting for that to be completed. And we also have a pretty active pavement management plan in the city. And you can see almost on a daily or weekly basis, new roads being taken care of within our city. Yes, we have a lot of catching up to do because of economic situations after the last seven years, but we will catch up, and this is important too, in the financing of this city. We will complete the public engagement and design process for other infrastructure projects. And that's the Rissman Park and the rebuilding of the Perry-Rissman Path. And we're in the process of doing that now, but it'll be, probably be, a couple of years before we have it complete. But this is a public process, and people are invited to participate in that. The Bay-Capitola Avenue intersection, the discussion of a potential roundabout and intersection, will move to the design phase in this next year, and the community will make a decision whether that's a viable project. The Depot Park bus stop project, in Depot Park, we're talking about the little piece of land that's by the railroad tracks adjacent to the Depot Inn, and that we have a planned project there for a bus stop and potentially someday, the possibility of a trolley stop also in that location. The Claire's Slow Street design that we've been discussing for a number of years has finally come into fruition, and I think, if I'm correct, that this will actually be put in place this year, and much to the happiness of the people who live along Claire's and trying to slow that traffic down. We'll take some important planning projects this year. We'll complete the zoning ordinance update. This will be a big issue within the city. It's controversial, and it needs public input, and the future of land use is really governed by this document. So it's important for people to participate in that process. We'll complete a climate action plan. That's part of our general plan. That will be done this year. We'll update our housing element, which is something we do every, seems like every year, but it's actually every four years, I think. Begin the formulation of a new replacement library. And we are saving money to do a new library. We plan on doing a new library. It may take a sales tax initiative to do that, but we will build a new library in this We'll be discussing the possibilities of creating an historic ordinance in Capitola. Part of what we like about this community is its size and its scale and its history, and we have to work hard and be diligent about saving that. Our fiscal stability projects include finding solutions to issues posed by the new purse policies that is fair to both the city and the employees' groups. Complete the citywide fee study to ensure compliance with the Prop. 218 and 26, while also streamlining the schedule. Research viability of accepting credit cards at the city hall counters. We still don't have a building to take a credit card in the city. I don't know if that's a good thing. Help to pass a regional library funding measure. It'll probably be, if I'm not correct, it's probably next year.
Partial tax in June.
Partial tax in June. Beneath discussion, begin discussion of the mall and the 41st Avenue revitalization. That is the bread and butter of this community. Actually, it's the dollar of this community. And we're seeing some failure on that avenue and the businesses. We need to put our attention to the economic revitalization of that area. Some police projects that we have in line. We're moving towards body and car cameras as being a regular thing, and with recent news, people understand the importance of that. We're going to upgrade the pay stations to accept phone payments. So we are modernizing. I can't say that we're reducing staff. It's just that the job becomes bigger. But the demand from community also becomes bigger. And I can't think of a better town for services that you can live in than the city of Capitola, both by your police department and your city itself. It's our goal as the city council members, as all of us, to take this responsibility to address all of these issues during this coming year. And I think that there isn't an item on here that we cannot put to fruition or complete within our, within the next year. And that's a, it's a big agenda, but it's also very possible for us to take us that course. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
One last comment. I was remiss. I left four very important people out when I thanked everyone, and they're people I affectionately called during this election campaign, my minions. And they're not small and yellow, but it's Paul and Terry Gregory, Mike and Lynn Banks, my campaign committee, worked tirelessly, handing out buttons, putting up signs, harassing everyone that would let them speak to them. So thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight. We will adjourn this meeting to January 8th next year, and we will see you then after the holidays. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.